Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, May 14th, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Sure.
Al Bohasky.
Gribovic.
Here.
Hartley.
Here.
Henderson.
Johnson.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Sorensen.
Stahlnecker.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
All right. Thank you.
We have a quorum.
What's that?
We have a quorum.
A quorum, yes. All right. First order of business tonight is approval of minutes. I would move to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. That carries. Is there any public comment tonight? This would be for any item that is not on our agenda tonight if you would like to speak on that. All right. I will bring it back to commission. We have one item of old business today. It is a zoning code text amendment allowing specialized educational facilities in the M1 district. And I believe Chris Seavey has this tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So, this will be a rehashing of what we talked about on our last meeting in April. The city recently received an inquiry about a dance academy that would like to locate on Viking Road in the M1 light industrial district. The M1 district actually disallows schools, and there are two types of schools defined in the code. One is general educational facilities. These are public and private schools, non-boarding schools that have a curriculum similar to that in public schools. So, we're talking about just a general education, you know, what you'd expect in our public schools. Then there are specialized educational facilities. Schools primarily engaged in offering specialized trade, business, or commercial courses, but not academic training. These also include non-degree granting schools such as music schools, dramatic schools, dance studios, martial arts studios, language schools, and civil service, and other short-term examination preparatory schools. So, this delineation is really important for what staff is proposing. Just to kind of discuss reasons why we might allow specialized educational facilities in M1. The M1 district already allows a wide variety of uses where people and children may visit often, including some daycares and other things. The M1 district is a light industrial zone, so it's not, you know, you don't typically have factors like the noxious fumes and other things that you would have in a heavy industrial area. Market factors that might exist there will discourage specialized educational facilities from locating in places that would discourage their clientele. So, you know, kind of allowing the market to kind of choose where these can go is, you know, a wise way to go. Technically, specialized education uses are already allowed if they're accessory to an existing business in the M1 district. And also, some non-conforming specialized educational facilities have already been operating in the M1 district without any real issues of concern or problems that have been reported to the city or otherwise. So, our proposed solution is to make a very, very minor change to the M1 district. The very first use, or I guess kind of prohibition in the M1 district. It says permitted principal uses are as follows. Any use permitted in the C3 district except that no occupancy permit shall be issued for any dwelling, school, hospital, clinic, or other institution for human care. We would just change school to general educational facilities since that's a very specific type of school that's outlined in our code, in the use-specific standards section of our code. And so, it has a very specific definition, and that's, you know, by this token, it would allow the specialized educational facilities to operate in the M1. So, with that said, staff recommends that the commission discuss and make a recommendation to city council regarding this case, the proposal to allow specialized educational facilities in the M1 light industrial district. If you have any questions, I'm available.
All right. Thank you. Does commission have any questions for staff? I will, but this is city. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to come speak to this item? Yeah. Name an address for the record, please.
Brett Van Hove. We operate at 618 Brandiлен Boulevard of Van Hove Dance National Dance Academy. I spoke to you last time, so I won't go through the whole thing again. I just want to reiterate our support and kind of representing ourselves, the current businesses that are already there operating, as well as the new ones that might move in. This is a great space for businesses like ours and others that would otherwise struggle here in Cedar Falls to find available space, affordable space, when you speak to truly small businesses that aren't operating with larger resources and budgets such as ours. I also happy to answer any questions. I don't think we necessarily offered that last time, but happy to do that. Again, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm just want to make sure we reiterate our support. As we talk to people, we continue to get support. Even our current landlord actually offered great support and encouragement in working with you, said he's worked with you and has been really successful and happy with that. So, again, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
All right. Thank you. Is anyone else from the public like to speak to this? All right. I'll bring it back to commission. I like this proposal. I think it makes sense. I like the change in the verbiage to expand, to allow this type of education in a light industrial. I think it totally makes sense. I would make a motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? All right. We do a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. That is approved, and we'll move on to city council. That closes old business. Move on to new business. We have multiple items in new business tonight, and the first three items, agenda item three, four, and five are going to be discussed at once and voted on separately. So, I think this goes to Tom tonight to discuss this.
Good evening, commission. Yes, as he stated, these are all three similar cases. The property owners, one is Jared Christopherson owns the 1907 College Street property, and the other two are owned by Bryce Steyer, and they're working together to do the work. And their request is for a standing seam steel roof. And the reason this is before you is that there aren't any in the area, and so this is something that the overlay district talks about. You know, the purpose of the overlay district is to make sure that neighborhood's stabilized, and so that any development or redevelopment doesn't have any adverse impact on what's there. There are no roofs in the College Hill area that are standing seam. Traditionally, standing metal seam roofs were used largely for industrial buildings and bigger buildings that had a larger span because it offered more support, where residential structures were commonly wood shingles, clay, and tiles or asphalt came into heavy use in the early 20th century, and that sort of became the standard because it was lighter and easier to use. There have been a great deal of strides made in the design and manufacture of the steel roofs now. And you think about them, they're used to, on agricultural buildings, a lot of times they were galvanized steel products which tended to rust over time and pull free. These are, you know, more state-of-the-art and are, adhere to the buildings better. Another thing about the standing steel roofs, they last longer typically than asphalt shingles. The steel can be recycled in some, most cases, where asphalt typically ends up in landfill. And then they're also more ecologically friendlier because of that, and hold up just to the elements a little bit better. So, the analysis here, we look at three things in the College Hill district, architectural compatibility. And in this case, we've not really seen any roofs in that area, but it's, a lot of it is just the fact that these are older properties. They're now getting ready to be redone, and so that's an opportunity. There are some in the city, particularly new construction. You'll tend to see that. The location, on the left is the one on College Street. And then the other two are side-by-side. They're the ones on 22nd Street. They're proposing to match the colors of the existing roof, which is one of the things that's mentioned in the design review standards. We talked about the fact that the three criteria are the architectural compatibility. There'll be no change to the roof or the, to the structure of the building, the gables or anything like that. So, this is just strictly a material change. And there shouldn't be any compatibility problems with it. Again, steel roofs are quieter. We're seeing them used more in new building and actually in more upper-scale residential. The second is that the neighborhood character, again, since they're not changing the roof line or any of the other items, the structure's basically staying the same. It's just the materials that are going to be changed. It should remain in character with the neighborhood. And then, again, the building materials, this is a new material, but it's starting to become more popular throughout the city on particularly new construction. So, with that, staff recommends, has reviewed this proposal and recommends the standing, approval of the standing steam steel roof based upon the architectural compatibility. And that's because, number one, they're going to use choice of color that will match the current roof. The roof pitch and the gables will not be altered to apply the material. And the steel roof materials are durable and have a greater longevity than asphalt materials. They're more eco-friendly due to the previously mentioned reasons that, you know, talked about the recycling and longevity and the fact that can be easily recycled. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if any of the property owners are here.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Is there any questions for staff?
I just have one question. So, looking at, this is sort of related, but looking at just sort of the maintenance of the exterior for these homes, I think in a lot of the rentals, like, some of them are pretty, like, the paint's chipping, and what are the expectations or what are the requirements for those owners, you know, as they're making these upgrades to, say, the roof, to look at maybe the existing structure as well?
That's a good question. They're not here, but typically, the buildings that, you know, a homeowner replaces one item at a time. We've seen applications for roofing and siding. A lot of those, if they meet the standards, so if they would, you know, someone comes in and they're maybe replacing wood siding with a vinyl siding that has the same profile, same color, they're not covering up any of the soffit details, things like that. We would normally review that and based upon the criteria, the fact that there's not doing any alteration to the structure, we would administratively approve that. So, if they'd come in with gray asphalt shingles, you wouldn't have seen this case today. So, that's the reason why it's a, it's a change. It's not necessarily a bad thing that you're reviewing it, but because the section doesn't specifically address any type of a metal roof, it comes for you and council to decide whether that is appropriate.
But like, as far as some of the maintenance stuff, if it's not like a nuisance property, it probably wouldn't rise to our attention, right?
That's correct. Yeah, a lot of the maintenance are, they don't come forward. We've had people that have replaced porches, and they've replaced it. And the intent is if you've got turn columns and a railing that has to go back on there, if you choose to do something different, you know, we, in the area, previously, there were some houses that just had a deck out front. They tore the porch off. Well, that would not be approved without coming before you to review the criteria.
Understood. Thank you.
I can maybe speak real quickly about the rental process. Rentals are inspected every three years, and especially when they change ownership, that's when we have an exterior inspection by our building inspector. And if there are issues that need maintenance, as you're talking about, those are things that are required prior to them obtaining their rental permit, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Metal roofs are allowed in other parts of the city, correct? Metal roofs are allowed in the rest of the city.
That is correct, yes.
Because I'm seeing them more frequently, so.
And to point out one obvious one, the community development director, Stephanie, has a standing seam roof on her house, which really looks nice. But, you know, again, it's in a different part of the city.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
When I was looking at the packet that was provided, the manufacturer, it looks like the color collection, the image that they, that you put right in the packet, was not actually for the roofing material itself, but for the underlayment of the roof?
Yeah. I was a little confused with why they presented that. I think it was they were using the underlayment colors, the roof.
Yeah, which is not actually the color that's going to be shown. So, I mean, I'm actually absolutely for the standing seam, totally more sustainable. I think it's, makes a lot of sense, better warranty, agreed with all the reasons. But I just want to be, the only thing that was brought to my concern was, I think if we have, if there's a reflective color, then I think that could be, you know, something that might be an issue. And so, I just think when choosing the color palette, they're choosing the color that's from that collection. It looks like that's actually the color that would be underneath the roofing materials. So, but if they're, you know, if it's in kind to what's already there, and you know, it's not going to be that.
And they did state in their, that they were going to use a close color match.
Sure.
I know when you, what you're talking about, typically, when the old galvanized roofs needed repair, somebody would go up and paint it with a bright silver, similar to what used on LP tanks, which then reflected a lot of light. The newer manufactured ones are, the colors are more subdued, and there's not the high reflectability that sometimes, you know, would see in some of the older.
Sure. I just know now you can get some that like are faux copper, you know, or something like that. And as long as they're, you know, in kind to what the color is currently, I think it makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to point that out.
Right. And that's why the color is important. I mean,
Yeah.
You could do a red one, but there's no other red roofs in the area. So, that would, that wouldn't be compatible with the neighborhood. So, the existing colors, shades of gray or the brown are compatible.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any more questions? So, either one of the petitioners here tonight would like to speak to this item? Would anyone from the public like to speak to this item? All right. We'll bring it back to commission. I'm for this. I support it. So, we do need to vote on these all individually. So, I'm going to make a motion on the agenda item three for the location at 1907 College Street. I'm going to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Gribovic.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. That will move on to city council. We'll move on to agenda item four for the property at 1112 West 22nd Street. And again, I would motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Gribovic.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. That will move to council, and I'll move to agenda item five. And for the property at 1104 West 22nd Street, I would motion to approve that.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Gribovic.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. That will go on to council. Move on to agenda item number six is a CHN design review for a new garage at 721 West 29th Street. And I believe J D has this tonight?
Yes, that would be me. One second. Good evening, all. This is the sixth item for tonight. Another College Hill overlay design review for a new garage at property at 721 West 29th Street. The location map indicates the property is highlighted in red. It's off West 29th, and it's south of the University Avenue for the location context. The proposal here is to request to approve this design review for a new detached garage on the property. This property is zone R2 and is within College Hill neighborhood overlay zoning district. As per the overlay district, any new construction of a detached accessory structure over 300 square feet in, for residential use is considered as a substantial improvement, which requires review by planning and zoning and city council, which is why we are reviewing this today. Existing condition, there's a single wide driveway that leads to the detached garage currently on site. This is a tight two-stall garage, which is 16 feet wide and 22 feet deep. The proposal is to remove that existing garage and add a new two-stall garage, which will be 24 by 24. This new garage will be, the building will be set back two feet from the side property line and maintain 12 feet separation from the house. As per code, two feet is what is required from the side property line, and then minimum separation required is eight feet. So, both of those meets the standard. Talking about the building design, this new garage will be sided with four-inch timber crest vinyl siding, which will be similar to the house, and asphalt architectural shingles roof, again, which will be similar to the house. The garage height is about 11 feet, which is allowed as per code. The two-stall garage will be recessed about 36, 36 feet from the front building wall of the house, which will be similar to the other houses in the neighborhood. The size and the scale of the garage are similar to the other houses in the neighborhood. I did include some of the existing house pictures in my staff report. That was just to give an idea about what other houses in this block have. Most of those houses had a setback garage from the front property line like this one, or have a garage which is in line with the structure. So, again, it's not going to change much character, especially when there is currently a garage already in place. It's just a more slightly bigger garage that is being proposed. With that, staff recommends approval of this College Hill design review application for new garage at 721 West 29th Street to support applicant's need, subject to any comments by planning and zoning commission. Applicant is here tonight for any questions, and even I am here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, have any questions for staff? Petitioner here like to speak to this item tonight? Name an address for the record, please.
721 29th Street, Jason Straylo. We're just, we want to put a double wide garage in there, just so we can get two vehicles in there. The one that's just in there now is just not, not compatible today's living style. So, cars, that's it.
Okay.
I wish your process was quicker. I will say that, but other than that, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, anyone from the public like to speak to this? All right. I'll bring it back to the commission. This is pretty straightforward, just putting in a slightly larger garage.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Gribovic.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. That will move forward to city council. Our seventh agenda item tonight is a rezoning from C3 commercial and R4 residential to a C3 commercial location. Our three lots on College Street, 2104, 2110, and 2116. And I believe Tom has this tonight?
Yes, that is my case. This is similar to a case that we saw in 2020, where Bonnies wanted to do some, had, were making plans for the future. When this, you see the location on the screen. When these properties were, the zoning was put on the properties, it appeared that just north of there, there's an alley. And so, the east line of the zoning district was along that alley, and it just carried through to the south to 22nd Street without really taking any into consideration the property lines. And so, these properties have had, have had split zoning on them for quite a while. The applicant would like to rezone these properties and get unified zoning on all three of them. The majority of the property is zone C3, so that was the request, to go to C3. And the plans are likely to proceed with an application to build, work to get. with an application to build work to get workforce housing credit and to build something on the property. That's kind of the reason why, you know, we've got this College Hill zoning update process started, but the timing with this, he would like to go ahead and get the rezoning. So then everything is in place that he could apply for that tax credit. The R4 district is sort of a transition, excuse me, the C3 is a transition district between, no, let me go back. R4 is a transition district between the commercial districts usually and then another R district. In this case, in College Hill, it's R3, which is a little less intense. So the R4 creates a buffer through there. And that was the intent when this was done. Again, just somebody drew a straight line. The amount of acreage is 0.57 acres of land. It involves three, three parcels. There's actually two multi-units on the north, two parcels. And then at 22, or 2104 is a, it's a separate, it's a duplex. So it's got two separate entrances, but the other ones were, they were all converted from a residential structure. Most of the uses in the area to the east in the R4 are residential, either multifamily or a couple, single family. At the south end, we have the Bonnies, which I mentioned before, which is C3. And then the city has a public parking lot at the corner of Olive and 22nd Street. Most of the property to the west of this is commercial and university and heavier density residential. And then to the east, we get into the lower density residential districts. The property is kind of across from the Quick Star Convenience Store. And then just north of 22nd, there are several small service and restaurant businesses and sort of a downtown Main Street character because the buildings are attached. Rezoning these to allow to have the redevelopment of commercial on the ground floor and residential above will sort of help to reunite the lower hill from the upper hill, which is one of the the goals of the College Hill plan. So this is supports that plan. The proposed C3 zoning would allow that type of development. It's in the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay District again. So when the new development comes forward, it'll there'll be a review again by Planning and Zoning Commission as well as city council. Compliance with the comprehensive plan, which is one of the requirements, the future land use identifies these properties as mixed use and neighborhood commercial. And one of the characteristics is the fact that you use low impact commercial uses and residential uses together. The future land use designation for all three properties is neighborhood commercial mixed use. Therefore, the request for the C3 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's no need for any land use map amendments, which sometimes we see when there are rezonings. And then finally, this property has access to all the public utilities and public services in the city. Right now, each lot has a driveway, but when the property is redeveloped, then the driveway or entrance locations will be reviewed as part of the redevelopment plan. Staff recommends the proposed rezoning case, a request to rezone 2104, 2110, 2126 College Street from C3 Commercial District and R4 Multiple Residence District to C3 Commercial. And again, while we're doing the, as with Bonnies, we're doing the C3 and C4, we're covering it over the entire description because we're not sure if those lines that were drawn actually cover the property in this way. It'll take care of all that, make sure that they're all zoned properly. And I'd be happy to answer any, any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, I just would like to point out there's a couple clerical errors in those where they listed the one property as 2126 instead of 2116. So.
2104, 2110.
Oh, yeah. That's right. So it should be 2104, 2110, and 2116, which is in your staff report alludes to those.
Yep. Okay.
I have a question about, so the map that was provided, you can see north of the proposed of the of the lot, most of that is C3. How about south?
Pardon me?
Going south to.
Going south, the C3 extends down to 22nd Street and then goes over to Olive Street and goes south. So.
How far south?
Down to, not quite to University. It comes back in. It may go down to Sealy at the most, just to capture the main businesses there in College Hill.
Okay. It covers most of College Hill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And I was looking at the map. There may be some cases in the future where some of these, some of those properties below there that don't have alleys. There may be some cleanup that may be done if they ever go to redevelopment.
Okay, thank you. So petitioner here tonight like to speak to this item? Anyone from the public here tonight like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to commission. I mean, this is a bit of housekeeping, but it's also, I think, a good move for the property owner and a good move for the neighborhood. I think it's a great plan to.
And you notice this is a recommendation to approve to move it forward to council because of the timeline for the tax credit.
Yes. Yep.
I just have to say, I actually lived in one of those houses when I was a student and it needed to be redeveloped back then. So I think this will be a great improvement.
Is there a motion in there?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve.
All second.
Any further discussion? All right. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please?
Kribovic.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnaker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. That will move on to commission. We have two more agenda items tonight, and they are kind of tied to each other. But we'll start with the land use map amendment amend from medium density residential to low density residential. And I think JD has this tonight. So I'll just let you take it.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, this is the future land use map amendment for Green Hill Village. The subject property, as you can see, is located within the Green Hill Village master plan area. It's highlighted in red. That's the subject property that the future land use map amendment is being requested for. This is about 5.22 acre of property. The request is to amend the future land use map in the city's comprehensive plan to change the designation from medium density residential use to low density residential use to allow proposed development of a low density detached, single-family dwelling unit development. Just to give some background, I'd like to start this property, the area in blue is basically the MU district boundary of Green Hill Village. This was zoned MU back in 1998. And then there were several amendments to this master plan to facilitate development over the years in this area, with the last amendment being done in 2018, which was for the same property, the subject property highlighted in yellow. The last amendment for for this area was approved to allow development for multi-unit townhomes. Just wanted to point out, I've created this map on the site. This is the city's future land use map. The area in question is the the hatched area, which I've highlighted. A few, as per the future land use map, medium density or the area in orange emphasizes development and variety of housing types. So, you know, mixture of housing type, including townhome, multi-unit homes, single-family homes, all of those type of residential development are allowed. And the density is between four to 12 units per acre. Whereas the low density residential use in the city's comprehensive plan, which is the yellow area, emphasizes single-family detached development and typical density is between one to four units per acre. The current master plan for the site allows for development of multi-unit townhomes with a density of 7.7 units per acre with a total of 28 units. So that that is currently on file for this property. The request here today we have is to amend this plan to change the designation on the future land use map from orange, which is medium density residential, to low density residential use, which is yellow, to facilitate development of 16 single-family dwelling lots with a density of 3.07 units per acre. This is falling under the comprehensive plan guideline with low density residential use. And the this request also aligns well with the other low density residential uses in the area. As you can see, the immediate south area is low density residential use. Staff feel that this will be consistent with the other uses around and would allow the developer to have a low density development at this site. This is a land use map amendment, so it needs a public hearing. So for tonight, staff recommends gathering comments from Planning and Zoning Commission and public, and then continue the discussion on the land use map amendment and set public hearing date for the next planning and zoning meeting for May 28, 2025. I'm here to answer any questions as well as the applicant is here. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Is the petitioner here tonight like to speak to this item? Name an address for the record, please?
Yeah, Kevin Fittro, 720 Yale Parkway, Big Hand Pepper. We felt this was going to be, this will also go to workforce, but we felt that based on comments and past history of many multiple family units, bringing it to single-family units was the best move for that area. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone from the public like to speak to this item? Name an address, please.
Tim Hanson, 1517 Athens Court. We're a law, I'm the president of the HOA. So the single family. So we're all for the single-family homes. The questions we had as far as the board that brought up, as far as the size of the home, square footage, and I've known Kevin, I can ask him as well. But that's one issue they had. Another issue is this is this going to be an extension of the HOA as far as another phase for us or their own HOA or nothing or something like that, as well as we're questions on.
Okay. Can staff answer any of that or the developer as far as HOA? Does this be a new HOA for this area or?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Well, it'd be in a new addition. So I'm assuming JD, correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be its own HOA. I don't know if this falls under the full Green Hill.
That is my understanding too, because it's a separate lot, which is owned by a separate developer trying to develop. So it will be its own HOA, but.
Yeah.
As far as square footage, I mean, it's going to be like homes in that area. That area has a pretty wide range of square footages from 1,000 square foot up to 1,800, 1,900, 2,000 square foot. So our intention is to have it be right in the middle of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff or petitioner? All right. I would move to set a public hearing for May 28.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does this require a roll call vote also?
Yes. Kribovic.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnaker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
All voting aye.
All right. Thank you. Public meeting is, our public hearing is set for May 28. Our last agenda item today is an MU master plan amendment, amend from townhomes to single-family residents in the spot we were just talking about.
Yes. So yes, this is the following continuation of the same property. This is a request for MU district master plan amendment for the Green Hill Village area for the same subject property. The proposal is to amend this, the current Green Hill Village master plan to allow for construction of detached, single-family lots on this property. Again, it's the same boundary, the Green Hill Village MU master plan boundary in blue and the highlighted property is in yellow. The current, as I discussed earlier, the last amendment for this yellow area was done in 2018, which allowed multi-unit residential townhomes. On your screen, I have two master plans. Up on the left is the current master plan, which allows for total of 28 units within four, five, and six unit townhome buildings, which was 7.7 units per acre. And then the current proposal here is to allow 16 detached, single-family lots with a density of 3.07 units. As per MU code, whenever a master plan is presented, it needs to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan or the future land use map. We know that the current plan is not inconsistent, just because the proposed density is similar to the low density residential use and not, not in, not for the medium density residential use, which is why the first case for master plan amendment was being requested as well. Again, as I mentioned, an amendment to the future land use map, the first case that we reviewed, sorry, the last case that we reviewed would be requiring first prior to approval of any master plan amendment, just to make sure that any plan in this area is consistent with city's comprehensive plan. Proposal here again is to reduce the density, which was from 7.7 to 3.07 units per acre. The buildings setback proposed for this single-family homes are 30 feet front and rear setbacks, 10 feet side yard setback, and 30 feet perimeter setback, which will be on certain lots as indicated on the master plan. Staff wants to note that no structures are permitted within the 30 feet perimeter setback as per the MU district guidelines. You may also have a question about why a big side yard setback is just because the code requires about 20 feet separation between two structures in this code, which is why we have that high setback. The MU district has a landscaping requirement. This is a total, like a landscaping points requirement as per the total development of the site area. As per the site, the total landscaping point require are 4,564 points and 1,453 street tree points. The landscaping points needs to be accomplished with landscaping on private property and street tree points will be with street tree placement in the city's wide of way. So to the required 6,017 points, the applicant is proposing 6,320 points. The applicant has indicated that this will be all evenly distributed between all lots as shown on this landscaping plan. The landscaping plan was in the packet. They have given specification of what exact species of trees and shrubs will be planted to meet the points requirement. So that will have to be followed. Talking about the building design, applicant has provided the three images to the right. These are just illustrations of what the single-family homes would look like in this area. MU, MU zoning district requires applicants to provide how the building will be designed, what will be the architectural features, what materials will be used. In response, the developer is proposing detached, single-family dwelling units, floor plans. It was indicated about anything, any range between 1,300 to 1,800 square feet. This will be craftsman-style exterior with high pitch roof, vinyl siding, prominent front porch, and then longer driveways and setback two-car garages. So those are the features of possible design of these homes in this area. Proposed design will create more of a residential presence on the street and reduce the, reduce the appearance of garages on from the street, but also provide a enhanced appeal in the neighborhood. Uh, also, building design is consistent with other houses in this area. Uh, MU, MU district does require, uh, to ensure that the, the building design and the character of the houses does not differ from the other houses in the neighborhood. Uh, with that, there are some technical comments, uh, so the proposed master plan amendment, uh, cannot be approved prior to the approval of future land use map amendment, uh, which was the case that we discussed earlier. Uh, a development agreement, uh, that details out all the aspects of this MU district master plan, like building design, landscaping, uh, any other technical information needs to be ironed out in the agreement, which will be required prior to city council review. Uh, if this master plan is, amendment is approved, applicant will be, will need to submit the preliminary plat and final plat to develop the subject property, which will be again coming back to you, uh, for review and city council for review. Uh, staff wants to note that preliminary plat must make, uh, when, when a preliminary plat is submitted for this area, it needs to match this, uh, approved master plan, and any substantial change is identified at the time will, may, may require a new amendment of this master plan because the code required that both the master plan and the plat is consistent. With that, uh, staff recommends gathering any comments, uh, from the commission as well as the public, and continue this discussion, uh, at the next meeting, uh, as, as I told, uh, this cannot be approved tonight, uh, prior to approval of the land use map amendment case, so I am here to answer any questions, and so is developer, so, thank you.
Thank you, J.D. Any questions for staff? Petitioner like to speak to this item at all? Okay, anyone from the public like to speak to this item? All right, I'll bring it back to commission, and I will just, uh, I don't need a motion for this, right? We can just move it till next meeting, which will be May twenty-eighth, along with the previous, um, agenda items, so, all right. Uh, that will end our agenda items tonight. Uh, is there any commission updates?
Uh, no, no commission updates.
No commission updates, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We got motion and a second, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.